Be resolved that the agenda for the March 21st, 2023, meaning be accepted as presented. Please move that. All in favor? Be resolved that the special medium council be recessed to allow council to hold a public hearing to receive representations from any person who wished to make them in respect of the 2023 financial plan. Please move that. Mr. Fisher, Secretary Jones, all in favor? So you want to start with?
Elaine will start with the presentation. Turn it on.
It's coming.
Everybody should have a hot coffee if you want to follow along, but it'll be on the screen. We'll start out by welcoming everybody for coming. Thanks you for your attendance and participating today. And we'll start out with introduction of council and staff. I know I don't have a loud voice. I'll try and project. Councillors representing Ward Two, the North Ward, we have Craig Hatch and Conrad Fury, representing the South Ward or Ward Three, we have Mike Fisher and Frank Jones. Ward One, which is Wallonisa, Bob Donald and Brett McGregor. And our head of council, Dave Krapowicz. For staff in attendance, we have Joni Swenicki, our CEO. I'm the finance officer, Elaine McGregor, and we have two administers, Cheryl Fraser over here and Norma Will over there. So just briefly to go over the agenda, we're going to talk about the purpose of the public hearing, a little bit of information about assessment tax levies and special service levies, review of the 2023 budget, mill rates and per parcel levies, what you get for your tax dollars, and we'll round out with next steps. So the purpose of having a public hearing is to inform ratepayers, the public, about the financial situation and our plans for the municipality, to assist the public to understand how their tax dollars are being spent, provides an opportunity for public participation and input, provides an understanding of the relationship between the services that the municipality provides and the taxes and the difficult decisions that must be made by council to determine a balance between the two. The public hearing provides a general overview of the 2023 financial situation. We thought this year being an assessment year, we talked a little bit about assessment and how it works and what it's all about and how it relates to your tax bill. So assessed values of all properties are determined by the provincial assessment branch, and we pay them $38,000 annually for this service. Property assessment is the assessor's best estimate of the most probable selling price for a property. Total municipal portion assessment, which is different than the current assessment for 2022 was $181,201,840. 2023 went up a little bit to $183,747,620. For 2023, the assessed values, which is what your tax bills are going to be based on for all properties, will be updated as of April 1st, 2021 market values. The last time we did, the last time the provincial assessment branch did an assessment that was based on April 1st, 2018 market values. Property assessments were last updated in 2020. Changes in the total portion assessment from 2022 to 2023 were about 1.405%. And the changes are due. Come on in. Changes are due to reassessments, to new development in the municipality and assessment removed from tax rolls, for example, if a building is removed or demolished. That 1.4% is the total percentage increase for the whole municipality. Of course, individual properties will vary. On average, farm properties went up about 5%. Residential properties went down on average about 6%. Then different classifications, pipeline, railway, they're all a little different, but the 1.405 was the overall average for the municipality. So how does that relate to your taxes? Individual property tax levy is calculated by taking the assessed value times a portioned percentage. For farmland, that percentage is 26%. For residential, it's 45. For commercial, institutional, other, it's 65. So you take your portioned assessment amount and times by the mill rate. Mill rate taxes are about 81% of the total municipal tax bill. And the mill rate levy and the special service levies are set by the budget requirements of the municipality. So just a bit of a chart to show you the assessment percentages by property class. Take a look at this. Now, this is the current total assessment. Farm properties make up about 52% of the total assessment. Residential, 30. Pipeline, 13, and the other smaller categories make up the rest. So those are the three main assessment categories. The next slide shows you the difference looking at the portioned assessment. So this is when you multiply by those percentages that I just explained. So when you look at portioned assessment, farmland makes up about 36%, residential's 36%, and the other classifications make up the 28%. So that's of the 28% of the taxes raised by the general at-large mill rate. So to kind of explain that a little bit, if you have a residential property assessed at 500,000, multiply it by the 0.45, you get a portioned assessment of 225,000. To have a portioned assessment in the farm property, you would have a property that has a value of 865,385 times the 0.26 gives you the 225. That's why these pieces of the pie change from the current to the portion. Are you with me? So just overall of the budget, the 20 2023 budget, 2,696, sorry, 2,964,779,51, which includes capital projects that are funded primarily from the reserves. This amount is an increase of 4.4% or 90,000. This is made up of several factors and we'll be going over them in the following pages. And just to note that the school tax portion of the financial plan is not included in the presentation. First category is general government services, which includes legislative, general administrative, made up of staff, office, legal, other general government, election conventions, insurance, intergovernmental relations. So this, the budget for this category is 591,000. That's an increase of just over 24,000 from last year. Most of the increase is related to increases in insurance and computer and software costs. You had to, we budgeted to replace a laptop, a couple monitors. Licensing for the software programs is going up and also increased security, two-factor authentication. Insurance, we have increased costs. We have additional costs for cybersecurity. And just overall general costs increasing, going through the roof. Next category is protective services. This includes police, fire, emergency measures of the protection. The budget is just over 166,000, an increase of 44,772, made up in part by 10,675 for the startup costs and the training for the EMR, the emergency medical responder program, and also increased paramedic costs. 20,000 of that increase is for bunker gear, an increase of 7,600 in insurance costs, which is, we have some new equipment and also increases in MPI costs. Also part of protective services is an increase of 2,300 for pest control. That's by law maintenance, animal, animal, dog and cat control, and an increase of $500 to the fuel budget. Transportation services. Includes roads and streets. Staff, equipment repairs, maintenance, road construction maintenance, gravel crushing, sidewalks, ditches. The budget for this category is just over 745,000, which is a decrease of 171,000 from last year. Some of the highlights of the changes from last year is an increase of 45,000 in staff costs, which includes 18,000 in seasonal staff wages so that we can do more mowing. An increase in the fuel budget of 49,500 from 67,5 to 117, just to be more in line with actual costs. An increase of 15,000 in shop and yard costs to account for the costs associated with the new shop in Wallonisa. Some of these are one-time costs. Like fixing the door, replacing the heater, about 4,000 of that is what we estimate the annual utility budget to be. Also part of the transportation change is a reduction in gravel crushing of 23,000. A reduction of 31,000 that we had to pay contractors last year for snow removal when our equipment was out being repaired. A reduction in grader maintenance of 20,000 now that we have a new grader. Hopefully, the repair costs will be a lot less. And a reduction of over 200,000 for projects that will be covered through gas tax instead of mill. Environmental health services includes garbage and waste collection. The budget for this is just over 134,000, an increase of 5,425. Of this, 1,900 is in relation to the agreement terms and in keeping with the special services levy. Also part of that 5,400 is 2,500 for base transfer station improvements. Public health and welfare, there was no change in this area for, from last year. It includes cemeteries, handy transit, senior independent services, and also includes, the budget amount is 26,100, includes $15,000 grant for the event. Environmental development services includes planning and zoning and community development. The budget is 6,000. This is an increase, a net increase of 1,700 due to an increase of 2,000 for expected costs for the restoration of survey monuments. That's something that we have no control over. They just tell us it needs to be done. And $300 reduction in contract services. Economic development services include destruction of pests, weed control, veterinary services, water resources, conservation, tourism, staff appreciation. The budget is just over 52,000, which is an increase of just, just over 15,000. That increase is made up of a boost of 14,000 to the rural weed control budget. An addition, an additional $1,000, $1,000 budgeted for the destruction of pests to help with the beaver problem. Problems. Recreation and culture includes community centers, halls, pools, ranks, playgrounds. Budget is 111,000, an increase of just over 2,000 or 1.86% and is keeping, in keeping with the recreation support special services levy. Fiscal services includes transfer to capital and utility. The budget is just over 581,000, which is a decrease of just over a million from last year. And the decrease can be explained by a reduction in transfer to capital, public works, a reduction in transfer to capital buildings, and a reduction to transfer to capital in fire. The 2023 budget includes capital projects in the amount of 361,546, being funded primarily by reserves. The, it also makes the lagoon project is part of that. That's 110,591 and 109,000 in venture funding for RF now and the ice plant. Also part of fiscal services is we have budgeted 150,000 for anticipated 2022 deficit recovery. That is due partly to increased costs and the big part of that is not being able to use gas tax funds for the office building. We had budgeted the office building to be paid for through money from the general reserve, from the building reserve and from gas tax. Found out afterwards that we were unable to use the gas tax funds. So we had to put the gas tax money back into the gas tax reserve, causing a deficit. But we are going to be offsetting that by, if you remember a few slides back where I said the transportation costs were decreased by a little over 200,000. That's for using the gas tax. So we're offsetting the deficit in what, for the office, using it for transportation costs. In other words, there's not going to be any extra levies, any extra charges as a result of that. But carrying on revenues includes other revenues, which is taxes added, penalties, licenses, permits, sale of services, operating grants. The budget is just over 782,000, which is a decrease of 1,336,000. Last year, we budgeted to tran- transfer 101,436 from reserves for the purchase of a new grader loader. Is somebody there? What is? This year, we budgeted to transfer 250,000 from the gas tax reserves for rural road projects, paving and a culvert reset, and 93,000 from other reserves for fire gear, a mower and a snow blade. Capital projects, capital projects or purchases planned for 2023 include the tandem truck and installment payment on the Wallonisa shop, which is Perry Klein's building, a new mower, a snow blade for the loader, paving in Wallonisa, a rural road, rural road projects and breathing apparatus for the fire department. The budget is just over 361,000 funded primarily for reserves, from reserves. The utility budget, which makes part of our financial plan, is wholly funded, entirely funded by the utility. The budget is 332,000, an increase of just over 15,000 from last year. The budget includes an increase in utility rates as set out in or public utility board order number 101/22. This is the first increase in utility rates since 2012. The budget includes two valve replacements at $5,000 each and the development of a proposal for water lines. Mill rates for 2023 with 2022 comparisons in brackets. The mill rate for 2023, 9.86 compared to 9.518. Last year, we had a mill rate for recreation against farmland and a mill rate for recreation against class, all other classes. We don't know what that rate is going to be right now because there's a pro, there was a problem with the software, with the program at the provincial level that they're trying to work out. It will be very close to last year. Last year was 0.266. This year, it'll be 0.2 something. And the other for the farm and the 0.426 last year, it'll still be 0.4 something. Other mill rates, 1.338 is the mill against Wallonisa properties for the lagoon. 1.121 is the mill rate against Wallonisa properties for the ice plant compared to 1.130. Special service levies per parcel charges. Again, there's not going to be any new special service levies this year. This is the 2023 per parcel charges are as follows. $50 per parcel for recreation for Wallonisa properties that are residential with no dwelling unit. That's the same as last year, 135,000, 135 per parcel for recreation for all other Wallonisa properties. Again, no change from last year. $25 per parcel for waste recycling for all residential properties of no dwelling units, same as last year. $15.50 per parcel for waste recycling for ag lands compared to 15.5, $15.59 last year. 95, 96 per parcel for waste recycling for other, all other properties, which was 94, 42 last year. Lagoon levy of 252, 25 per parcel for Wallonisa, same as last year. $130.57 per parcel for the rural fiber optics, that's the RF now levy. And that 2023 is the last year for that levy. 59.91 per parcel for the rural ice plant, which is the same as last year. So that's the dollars. What do you get for your tax dollars? Just some of the ideas that we came for. I won't lose through all of them, but just mention some road maintenance and improvements. Fire and protective services, community call, community halls, rink, veterinary services, 911, weed control, waste transfer station, hospital grants, groceries to the schools, animal control, by law enforcement. And where do we go from here? Next steps, we conclude the public hearing today. We adopt the financial plan and give first reading to the tax levy bylaw. We get the information uploaded to the province and then that triggers the printing of the tax bills. We mail the tax bills, payment due October 31st. And just a reminder that payment options include online payments, postdated checks and cash. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll turn over to you. Okay, it's your turn here. We came to this public hearing. So public hearing is dealt for the adult. Serve for the public. If you have a representation you'd like to make, we welcome you to make it now. You want to make it, you stand where you are. Please name, use your name, your address and our land number and proceed accordingly.
My name is the person. I'm just here representing myself and my husband. I just have a question about the gas tax fund money. I know that there's been letting out and it's bouncing out. But we got into a predicament for a reason. Is there now checks and balances in place to know that when you brought something that is a fund, that we know exactly what the criteria is? Do you have a way of monitoring that laws? We don't end up with this before again. And what, how is it that you're going to?
We're dealing with municipal relations on that directly, on every situation we want to go with gas tax board. There's a request made that we have to get permission from the provincial and federal governments and that's granted before we do a project.
So that'll be now monitored so we don't end up with that.
Just how do we determine the portion percentages? Are they regulated or is it something? 26%, the 45% is 65% commercial. That's the local regulation?
Yeah. Yeah, so those are not our rates. Those are same no matter where you live in the province of Manitoba.
For years, it's been kind of discussed that we'd like to see the provincial government reduce the farm percentage. It has not happened and that's why we took it up to do our special levies, we could reduce the cost of the farm properties. Nothing further?
Actually, I have a question. Giselle Corrable, Northwest 22819 West. Um, this has to do with the utility operating fund. The net operating surplus slash deficit for the deficit last year was 61,994. How is that being recovered?
We don't, we don't have, we have to show a deficit before we can ever ask for increases through pub. So we will recover it this year through our special rates. Our rates are increased this year, so that should recover that much of cost.
So the 60,000, the transfer to U of utility reserve? $60,000, where's that coming?
Can I just add to that? This is just the unaudited costs. Once the auditors do their magic, there is grant money that, the way they do a transfer of the grants. When we talked to pub or to Dale Lyle, he said that will zero out, you won't have to report a deficit. Once, once all the audited adjustments are made.
So another question, kind of on the same, same page. You'll notice that the purification and treatment last year was budgeted 26,000, actually spent 29,000. And this year it's only 15,000. Do you really budget less than what you spent last year, even you overspent on your budget? And what's going on with that? And this has happened in a few places. I noticed this on here. Whereas what was actually spent and what's budgeted for this year, what's budgeted is less than what's being spent.
Well, less was spent last year.
Yes.
For instance, fuel costs.
I'm not talking fuel costs. I'm talking this directly here. Fuel cost is different. Everyone dealt with fuel cost. Everyone dealt with.
So this could be chemical, it could be carryover, it could be a number of things that are there that have been carried over.
Okay, but why are you budgeting less?
So there was a very large water leak that persisted through all of.
So there was a very large water leak that persisted through all of last year where we're losing about thirty thousand gallons per day. So that's all treated water. That leak has been found, so the usage has come way down. We wrap over fifty five thousand gallons a day, now we're thirty thousand gallon, gallon a day range. So it makes sense to budget for less and also keep you in mind that these costs are only well used costs.
Yes, I know that. Yes, yes. I'm just questioning because I was on the same page. So you knew this going into the two thousand and twenty two budget, that you were paying that much for water purification? This leak was already in place when the two thousand and twenty two budget was figured?
We went through an assessment in two thousand and twenty two of our water system. And that's when they determined what our percentage of way of loss was et cetera. So that was done through that. So.
But it wasn't done when you did the budget for two thousand and twenty two.
Right.
So did you have a leak before you did it?
We've had leaks for years, for constant.
Back to that volume though.
It's all.
Good back. Wayne Kirby, I wrote one oh eight two one five. On page two, budget under insurance policy. There was a hundred and eighty seven thousand something that came in. What was that from?
That was from their crater that was damaged in the accident. And so we had to pay it out and recover it from the insurance company. Insurance company paid us.
Okay, and then so that income from that insurance proceeds, was that put against the new crater?
No, it was reported for the repairs. We had to pay the repair firm. So we paid the repair firm and the insurance company paid us.
Okay. So then, sorry, just jumping into page three, equipment repairs and maintenance. That two hundred and twenty one thousand, which is actually more than the budget, does that include that factor there?
Yes.
Is that listed?
I'm sure it is without looking at it. I'm sure it is.
Which line is that, Kirby? Three, two, three, oh, three.
I don't have. Do we have the financial planner?
That is what it is.
I'm sure that's what it is. Yeah.
It's on page three of the official budget document near the bottom. And three, two, three, oh, three.
Yes. Definitely, absolutely.
Yes.
Do you mind if I just continue on that page?
Sure.
If we go up into fifteen twenty, I just noticed that there's a healthy jump in the allocation for conventions. Is there a particular reason for that?
Is that from last, for this year, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, this year the convention was, would be twofold. It could be April and in November and not because of COVID. It was only the one convention that was.
Yeah, and also because we have a lot of new counselors.
Right. It's our eligible result.
Yeah.
And on the, again, same page, twenty five forty ambulance services. So the, the increase, the, whatever the tripling or group movie increase for this year is that because of the change over to our new regional system of ambulance?
That the EMR?
Yeah, that's what I mentioned on the slide under protective services, the EMR.
Wait, I'm sorry, when council was first alerted, I guess, to the fact that problems would be changing the way that it was going to be during the services. Was council aware that there's going to be a substantial increase in our operating?
No, I don't think that was ever, I mean, that comes about in two thousand and sixteen, they're advised and they're going to change that in the system. And it was always an idea that it was going to make it so that we wouldn't have to worry about ambulance services going to take over by the province. And they're going to do it through their GPS system. That was never going to work, obviously, but we, we weren't buying of anything further.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you anticipate continued climbing costs as we increase ambulance services?
Once we get, once we get established, I don't think so, but I mean, there's still going to be costs associated with trading and everything else that's coming down.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. I'm curious on page four, the budget, this is total transportation costs. And I appreciate that somebody already mentioned that we, we are going to be spending significantly less than is coming by year than we have previous. Does this mean, I'll ask the point of the question, does this mean that rural road repair and maintenance is going to suffer?
No. Uh, that's one of the major items that council has been working on is the three intersections on number ten highway being our road, Turkey Ranch and Tree Bank. And we're looking at everything we can do as far as possible, even to the point of possibly paving those these three hundred feet off of number ten highway. But we're going to look at all elements of that and where council fore is going to give some direction.
And you believe that within this budget year, you're going to be able to facilitate those repairs or those installments?
Well, that's through the gas tax. We can use gas tax for that as long as done by an independent contractor, not by our own people. And if we do that, then we can, we can accomplish a little more of that in those intersections. We, we feel is very important because of the loss board situation and we want to get that prepared as much as possible. We're going to try this and if it works, we'll be doing other roads as well off number ten highway and et cetera. So.
Yeah, gas tax money is used to improve the asset, not just maintain it.
Linda McCray Walker, thirty one eight time team. In the recreation and cultural services, there's like a five hundred thousand dollar increase from what you budgeted to what you actually did. Can you explain that?
That would be from the arena. The front page.
Recreation and cultural services. Last year's actual six hundred and fifty one thousand dollars.
Yeah, so this is again an a laurier thing, but this is, there was a substantial fundraising campaign to the ice plant. So those donations flowed through and they didn't need it to be recorded as both in and out. So we didn't budget for those donations, but they still have to be included.
But it's showing it like as an expenditure, you've got six hundred and fifty one, not in revenue.
That's good.
So there is.
Okay, good. We get the money in, it shows as a revenue. Then we pay it out.
Then you have to show the.
As the expense, so that's out. But it shows for transparency line items on the budget.
Okay, and is there money that was also given from, I believe there was something came down through municipalities as well? Is there not some eight thousand or eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars that was also provided to the recreation? Is that correct? Did I see something about that?
Just lately. Federal government just announced eight hundred and thirty two thousand.
And that's going towards the Wauwunnisa complex or how are we using that? Yeah. So is that going to help with some of this tax levies coming down a little bit if we're going to be getting money federally?
Uh, no, so the, the three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that the municipality
budgeted from.
Getting to the project, which as a reminder was two hundred and fifty thousand paid by Wauwunnisa and seven to five thousand paid by rural. So that's an important factor going to remember. So that, that's done. And, you know, I think it's, it's a really good news story, Linda, that that money was taken.
I'm not complaining. I'm just asking if that's what this is going to. Now, my other, my other question towards that then is it's great that Wauwunnisa paid what they did and we did what we did. Everybody contributed to it. Now, my other question is, is that naming of that complex going to change to the open Wauwunnisa or the open Wauwunnisa complex? Cause I know SIRS did that. SIRS is the Glenwood, SIRS Glenwood complex. And everybody paid towards that. I still make payments towards SIRS Glenwood and I have no problem making payments for creation. I have no problem doing that at all. But if we're all paying to it, should it not be considered a municipal recreational complex? I know it says one when you said district, but we're not a district anymore.
Right now, council just passed a resolution this about two meetings ago, was it? For a possible renaming of the arena. And I think at that time, we're going to have a full review of it as to what we're going, how we're going to name it.
That would be fantastic because I do honestly believe that if it's, you know, we're all going to be pulling together and be one. Then we need to start making sure that everything is named the same. Open Wauwunnisa is what it should be. So.
Yeah, you just gotta be a little bit careful with that, Linda, right? Because we also give money to the Nesbit Hall. So are we going to call that the Open Wauwunnisa Hall or the Carroll Hall? We're going to switch the name of it? Probably not, right? So.
Yeah. Ken, we call it the Guild Insurance Arena. Would you, would you be open to naming rights? That's at least twenty five thousand dollars here, so. Don't think we'll get that far.
Sorry, one more thing. Do we know what our final cost is for the rebuild on this? Do we have a final number?
Do you have that with you there?
I don't have the exact number, but it was pretty close to six hundred thousand.
So a lot over what we had budgeted for?
No.
I thought we read five something to give with.
The overrun that we had, I think it was around sixty thousand was for additions that we asked for because council decided we wanted to have something added on. For instance, different windows and different insulation than what was in the engineering. So that was added on by council. It wasn't, the cost overruns weren't there. In fact, we, we got a smaller, small portion back from the contingency.
Okay, the pergola, reason for the pergola?
This comes from the engineers designing, the architects of the design of the building.
So even though lumber was extremely expensive, we went with it anyway?
Well, like we came up, as I said, this started back in two thousand and twenty one.
I, I understand, but we were told that there was no way we were going to do it in Nesbit because the cost was way too high. And now we're sitting at close to what it would have been if we built in Nesbit. So that's the only reason I'm asking.
Of course, that's not correct. I want to make sure we do these accurately. The cost to do it in Nesbit was in the, in the neighborhood of seven.
It was over six hundred thousand, but then you would have asked for the changes because that was to make a building the same as this. So if council had made the determination that they wanted the upgraded windows, that they wanted the upgraded insulation, that would have added to those costs as well. That wasn't because this was a renovation. That was an actual request of council to improve what was planned for initially.
Through the engineers.
So the original information that we were all given, it has changed from what you're telling us now then. Because that seven hundred thousand was never, ever presented to us.
Seven hundred thousand, they were presented to you in?
In any document. Has anybody ever seen the seven hundred? Anybody that's here right now?
The seven hundred, what did it cost us?
But you said if we were to build in Nesbit, it was going to cost upwards of seven hundred thousand.
It was close to seven hundred thousand.
But that was never given to me.
It was given out at the very start of this whole program and through the rebuild.
The cost, the cost was said though for both options, Linda, right? And I'm going from memory, you know, of course, this is not a two thousand and twenty three budget issue, but I am going from memory and I think it was about, wasn't it about a hundred thousand dollars more to build in? Eighty thousand. Yeah, so that takes your five hundred from Wauwunnisa to six hundred. Then the additions that were requested, right, which would have needed to be added, so.
But it's still, we still didn't have seven hundred first that they told to us for Nesbit.
No, because those additions.
That's what I'm saying. We have never seen in printing, sent them.
But everybody was given, everybody in the municipality was given that information through, through the budget process as to what cost was going to be here. And in Nesbit, the additions were added on afterward, which was a budget, budget items brought up through council. And the resolution was passed through council.
That's council. That's not us seeing what you did. We didn't get to see that.
That's right. We have to make some of those decisions.
So all I'm saying is that what you ended up spending on this building was a lot more than what we originally were told was going to be spent. And it's close to what it would have been for Nesbit when, when we first saw the numbers.
Not even at that point.
Whatever. I'm not going to argue with you.
Mr. Kirby.
Actually, to, to the point that was kind of raised there, I wonder if this council considering for next budget cycle, having open meetings?
Public are invited to every, every council meeting we have.
But then you go in camera for certain things.
There are in camera sections, that's right.
So and Brandon, they'll do their.
My point, are you considering having open budget discussions?
We haven't discussed it. I can say that.
Just one more question, and I, and I want to be clear on this. And I think this is already addressed, but I, I wanted to clear on the page. It was page one of the budget. It's the net operating surplus deficit and we've got a hundred and seventy thousand some deficit for this and that was caused by?
Caused by use of gas tax to pay for this building portion. And we had, we're advised by the provincial government that it was not allowable when we submitted it. So it came back. We put that money back into gas tax, using gas tax in this budget to offset that.
Okay, good. So and then just one last thing. In, so we're moving ahead with the probably most council sites, otherwise a mill rate of nine point eight six oh. Now by contrast, in two thousand and sixteen, a few years ago, but still recently, two thousand and sixteen, urban, because we didn't have a permanent tax at that point, urban had a rate of eight point forty five percent. And rural was four point seven seven one. So in that timeframe, seven years, the rural mill rate is double. And the taxation rate, Wauwunnisa has usually stayed almost the same. I would like to hear from a rural council or a two one, whether they believe that we are being well served.
You're comparing apples to oranges there, but at the same time, all that, if the council wants to speak, they can speak to it. But it's your comparing two thousand and sixteen compared to two thousand and twenty three, the seven year difference. I don't know what was included in that mill rate. You'd have to go back and see. We're not discussing that at this point as far as this public hearing goes. This is for this financial plan. But I think they wish to comment, they can.
We have fire service included at that time?
And again, we'd have to go back. You were guessing from the seven years down the road, I'm not sure what that was. There's a lot of changes made in amalgamation. There's no doubt about it. Was there a reduction in, in the taxation in, in certain areas because of Wauwunnisa? Yes, there's a reduction in some taxation there and I don't know what increasing the rural as much as it would just kind of carry over. So at the same time, there's been a real difference in assessed values over this time period. Assess value in farmland is basically more than doubled since two thousand and sixteen. There's a lot of factors that moved into that, not just necessarily the costs.
I'm just asking whether that was still a real way you're wearing up money.
There's really money of a hundred and twenty thousand per year that was in there for just directly to rural expenses. I mean, there's, let's say it's apples to oranges at this point, so it is very difficult to say what that, that the difference is there. Remembering that we are going forward in amalgamation. That hasn't changed. So we have to do our budget accordingly.
Well, sorry, but respectfully, the difference is pretty clear. The rural mill rate is doubled. Where the, the rates charged to Wauwunnisa, rate bears is essentially stagnated.
Well, I think Mr. Kirby, you had, you had something came up a couple of years ago where you had your, your assessed value contested. Did that go down?
Like you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm just asking the question. That's part of the problems you get into this discussion of taxation. If your, if your assessment goes down and farmland goes up, that farmland pays, pays with you. There was that tax difference.
And I'm not sure what your argument is because while the rural taxation rate is double, the price of farmland has also gone exponentially. So what you're doing is you're getting more money on top of more money. Whereas in Wauwunnisa, what are you saying? The price of housing in Wauwunnisa has what? Not changed over the lifetime?
It hasn't changed much. I can tell you that.
Okay, so what you're doing then is you're getting more money from rural at a time when Wauwunnisa has not really contributed much more to the rural park. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think you, again, you can't compare it in that basis. You can't go, if you want to go by tax notes to tax notes, if you want to compare yours to mine sort of thing, I can show you that. We can go through all those kinds of scenarios, but it's. We can go through all those kind of scenarios, but it's not gonna solve what we're trying to get through this public hearing today. And this is the, the budget of this year, two thousand twenty-three. The budget is there, the, the council has rolled up their sleeves and done the best they can do is for our costs associated with revenue. And that's what we're putting forward.
Okay, so on that note, for two thousand twenty-three budget, what percentage of total taxes are rural paying compared to urban?
Very difficult to determine. Very difficult, because you have special levies that are, are done on a per parcel basis.
Everything is included. Somebody should have that number. Somebody should have an idea of the percentage that rural pays of the total taxes, including the levies, because we pay levies too, and what urban pays. At one point, it was fourteen and eighty-six. How much has that changed?
Eighty-six, fourteen is just the difference in assessed value.
No, 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 no. I remember exactly, we were in the Wamisah ring. No, we weren't in Wamisah. We were in Nesbit, and I asked that question, and it was for, the answer was at the time, and that was confirmed. I remember that.
Well, eighty-six, fourteen, again, I'll go through that, is a difference that is the eighty-six percent of the assessed value comes from the rural.
It was, it was taxed. It was the taxes collected at the time. I specifically remember that. That was in Nesbit, one of the budget meetings for Nesbit, and I specifically asked the question as to how much taxes does Wamisah pay and how much taxes does rural pay? And so Wamisah contributed fourteen percent.
Four years ago, five years ago?
In that neighborhood.
In that, yes.
Before we had any special levies.
Uh, there was maybe one, I'm not even sure at the time. Around the time you were talking, talking about this water treatment plant that nobody wants.
The, again, going through this budget this time, if we take a look at example of the recreation levy, and I think I sent that to this Ray Walker. At the last election, I sent her a copy of the bylaw that shows, and the bylaws are individual. And that bylaw says what's, what is paid by rural is paid by.
Yes, yeah, I'm just.
So that's not, that's not, if you sit, no, I'm just trying to explain this. We do each separate one. Special levy there was about fifty-fifty.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
So then you get special levy on the garbage situation. That is, again, a split.
Yeah.
How, what exactly that is, I don't, I can't tell you.
Yeah.
So once you, you calculated it out, that's how you can determine what's, what's rural and what's.
Yes, yeah. I know how to.
We don't have that handy here. We can get that number to you.
Okay, that would be good.
It'd be, it'd be a calculation, and they can, they can show it.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
See if I could figure out how to, because there's a lot of, a lot of numbers.
I'm sure there is. Even if you got the twenty twenty-two numbers, everything collected rural, everything collected urban, and then go from there. You should be able, it should be, yeah, easy to do.
Sure, and, and, I mean, you can use that number in any, any fashion you wish.
No, it should be, I'm in. I don't know in. It should be under tax program, whether you can differentiate by role number to do a calculation. To try and do it off the assessment rule would be very difficult because it's by class as well as by role number. But I don't know in the municipal program if you can separate it out to do taxes just by role number to only have the.
Not to break it down. The only thing I can think of is if we know that rural, all these role numbers are Wamisah roles. We'll get the calculator out, add them all up, and then do the same for the rural.
Well, we would know, yeah, we would know what our budget was, so that if we could calculate just what all the two hundred role numbers are, the difference would be that the rural is.
Yeah.
So it might be addition of, if, if there's no way to do it in a program, it would be adding.
Five hundred or however many?
How, however many role numbers there are in Wamisah, it's trapped to get off the top.
You have, you have rural, you have urban, you have other, not all of those, not all of the roles, so you're right.
Well, if I'm asked, hearing the question, what they wanna know is how much specifically did Wamisah pay versus how much did rural pay?
So that wouldn't tell you farm versus residential or farm versus bike line versus railway. That would just be.
How much Wamisah paid versus how much did rural pay?
I don't know what value there is in calculating that, but.
That's the only way that I can think of, easy way to do it, because I don't think it could be done off the assessment spreadsheets.
No, and it would be a manual calculation. Yeah, it would.
I have a request. Can we have the Nesbit office open as a satellite office to pay taxes on?
That Nesbit office is not functional.
Not at all? Why?
It's actually right now, it's infested, and it's got, it's got the insulation issue that's in there, the asbestos.
Which is in the ice.
It's in the ice, the phlegm is, it's, it's.
We didn't do anything to control anything. We just said we're done with it and we're.
Locked the door.
We're done with it, so it doesn't matter anymore, basically. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just asking, if this was a satellite office for a while, it's so, it would be nice to have that one as a satellite just for pay taxes, which I know other municipalities do have, you have an option to go to a satellite office. So I just thought it might be nice for some of our elderly people who maybe don't like to pay it through the mail or can't do it online, would like to be able to get to the Nesbit office rather than coming all the way here. But that's just, it's just a suggestion, but if it's not useful, that's fine.
Can you use the Nesbit home instead?
Not, not at this point, no. Council's not decided anything.
And you would have to have access to our programs, you'd have to have the internet connection.
There's no internet.
Yeah, accessibility issues, but all kinds of issues that are there. That's one of the reasons why we decided to change as a council to get into a private building that we can have those, those issued double. Council, I haven't discussed that at all.
Paul Center, thirty-five, eight, nineteen. So Heather Stevenson on February twenty-fourth announced that they were giving forty-seven million to all the municipalities in two thousand twenty-three. What is Open Wamisah's portion of this, and where is it included in the budget?
So, do you like to clarify the center or where is the name? Because we have got the number now, do you know?
We've got an estimated number.
So what happens is that when we send this, our information out on the internet, on, on the website, as for this public hearing, that can't be changed until the second reading of this, of the bylaw. We can't just start throwing money in or pulling money out after we've advised people on the website of this, this document. That document is there. When we get this money in, and we know the exact amount, it's that time council can make a decision whether to put it in general reserve, if you use next year's taxation, or to make another area to use it this year, whatever the case may be. But approximately?
Approximately ninety-five thousand dollars.
Is what we're getting.
And so what council will be asked at the time that they consider, second reading of the bylaw, is if they are prepared to do an amendment. You cannot increase the amount of taxes without doing another public hearing. You can keep it the same or you can decrease it. What council will be asked at that point is, if we're adding the ninety-five thousand dollars in as revenue, where would you like to see it go? Is it a reduction? Is it additional funds going into reserve or a part of it going into operating? That will have to be a council decision at the time of giving second reading.
And what is the exact tax increase for this year? What percentages are?
Four point.
Four point four.
And does that include the deficit from last year?
Yes, it does.
Or is that on top of it?
That includes everything. And that ninety thousand is not the total amount. That's the extra that she was talking about. Yeah, yeah.
So I would hope that council would put that against and reduce our tax bill somewhat. Or at least reduce some of the deficit with it, instead of spending more money somewhere. Would be my recommendation.
Mr. Rob, you got a question?
What's that?
Yes, it seems, it seems to me, if I remember the numbers correctly, that the increase in taxes was to bring in an additional ninety thousand dollars. Is that right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch.
The increase in taxes. An additional ninety thousand dollars.
Then in that presentation.
That would be pretty close.
Ninety thousand change.
Don't have that on here.
Okay, well, correct. We'll take a look at it. Was I correct?
It's pretty close, yes.
So, I mean, that presentation, and just as Lois just mentioned, and as the C O just confirmed, there'll be approximately ninety-five thousand dollars under that basket funding that will come to your hand. So if council looks at that and acts accordingly, that should negate the tax, the tax increase.
Council will take that under review.
That would be the responsible thing to do. Well, I had a couple of other questions while I, while I got your change here. Page three, budgeted in two thousand twenty-two, on the fuel cost, thirty-two, three, zero, two. Budget was sixty-seven, five, and yet the actual dollars spent was almost a hundred and twenty thousand. When could you elaborate on that?
Fuel costs have gone through the roof. What, that's?
You don't get it then?
Not in a one year span. You know, just, just an observation, just something that jumps off.
They've, they've been pricing between two companies, different companies.
We have, we didn't run any of your graders in the winter. And that, the winter graders hardly ran, we had custom guys.
Yeah, there's, there's something else in that category.
How did it mean anything else under fuel?
Look at the fuel. What is that?
That is the fuel.
Fuel would be fuel.
So it was, what was the budget?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, yeah.
And our fuel costs are different from the time we budgeted until we were actually were using it.
Yeah, we, we had the one grader we leased, and all that was.
You would have, you would have looked at the end figure for two thousand twenty-one to develop a, a figure for two thousand twenty-two. And you would have adjusted that based on additional fuel costs as far as increases. Because we've had increases going back five, six years now, and they've been substantial. But they don't, they do not equate to the difference in the fuel costs received here. Don't equate to what fuel costs have changed.
Well, then, we remember, we had, with the COVID thing and then came in two thousand twenty-one, we did have an increase of the fuel taxes, or the fuel costs skyrocketed at that point. They've come down now, but. Those are, those are actual numbers.
Yeah, we're talking two thousand.
So that's when the graders were out doing the major snow.
That's the year the graders were out commissioned. Or used. They're down. One of the transmissions gone and one.
No, no, one of the, that did figure. We were pretty killed.
Yeah, well.
You know, just, to me, that's a huge discrepancy.
What we did also there is that we, we distributed gravel with our own vehicle at that time. We reduced our gravel hauling cost well in that same period, because we're using our own, we have the semi-trailer truck.
So you also had that semi tractor in two thousand twenty-one, did you not?
Yeah, I don't think we used it as much though. We did in twenty twenty-two. We had, we have the, we leased a tractor longer, but anyway, it's actual cost. Those are actual costs.
So if you go down just below that, you go to line thirty-two, three, eleven. Budget at a hundred thousand, seven, two hundred and twenty dollars.
That was when we had our graders out, we had to get personal, private companies to start doing that work.
That's usually recorded under custom, when you do a budget, not under legal.
Not necessarily. That was, that come to that budget item. We'd have to put it under a budget item we have already put into the budget. We don't, we can't put a new, a different budget item in there after the fact. We'd have to use what we have on record. That's part of transportation.
So then, under rentals, would that not have been what you did with your grader? There's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar charge there for rentals, so would that not have been your custom operator?
No, that'd be the grader that we leased and also probably be the tractor.
Okay, so again, this is a budget item, and it's an ongoing budget item every year.
None necessarily.
Well, just that this one is, if I can finish here. The rental of a semi tractor to pull an albatram. On an annual basis, that tractor's costing us thirty grand for four or five months. Is that accurate? Did I see that right?
Probably accurate.
About you like?
Hey, it's probably accurate.
Thirty? So the question, it begs the question, why did we give away thirty thousand dollars a year starting back in two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one? And in three years, you've paid for almost, almost a new tractor back in those days.
Yes, when you were on council, when you were on council, the Mack truck, this, this R N was dumping twenty grand a year into that tandem truck.
Okay, so this is a different issue, right?
It's a truck.
No, this is a different issue. We dealt with that semi issue back then too. And council at the time said, no, this does not make sense because we have to take a, an operator off of a grader, put him on there, take him away from a function that was called, or a park anyhow. The tandem truck is already dealt with, you want a new one here, so now we have that truck possibly leased one. My question is simply, what is the rationale behind spending thirty thousand dollars a year that just goes out on a lease payment? When in the three-year period, you actually hold that truck? I'm not saying you should, I'm not saying you should a whole month, because I think it's just a little bit ridiculous when we hire custom guys. But what's the rationale to have that? That doesn't, he doesn't make very much business sense.
To cut back on the maintenance costs. We don't have anybody to pull wrenches. And it's loaded grenades in that truck. Bill, Bill Muller, he, he's a truck driver his whole life. He can tell you what the cost could be if that thing wrecks.
But don't have to go and buy a brand new truck though either.
We don't.
Well.
But if, but if we buy, if we buy a fifteen thousand dollar truck.
Buy a truck, right? You know, you can go on top of it, you can pick them up for fifty, sixty thousand dollars. You pick them up cheaper than what you buy your one ton for.
Yeah.
And as long as they're, they're checked over, like those things will go for years.
And the previous guys on council too, we discussed this truck, whether we should buy one or lease one. And at the time, we made the determination to lease one.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah.
But do you, do you really think that makes business sense? Is it an annual thing, or are you locked into a contract along with?
It's just.
It's an annual.
An annual, like, like you're talking like Dave, you're trying to compare apples to oranges. How many miles are you gonna throw on that truck in the municipality? The municipality is only eighteen by eighteen. Our, our truck actually hauled half as much as Gilbert, the contractor, hauled.
Well, then why'd you pay Fred a hundred and ten thousand dollars? Well, it goes into different, different categories, or you've been crushing it all.
Well, I don't know, but there was inside the paper that you guys paid Gilbert got a hundred and ten thousand, obviously. Yeah, so I don't know what he done.
Could I make a, sorry, a suggestion with the fuel cost? Just so transparency is out in the open. Would we be able to do a system where we know, having logbooks in every single municipal vehicle and you knowing what you're filling up and at what time, so then we can actually get a cost of each piece of equipment?
Oh, fuck meters that, on the pumps.
But I'm just saying specifically, like, say, greater one had this much fuel, this day, greater two, this much, and then there's.
Well, some gallons of fuel.
Whether that's there or not, we can look at that as far as. Or me?
Are you taxing Nesbit? What meter? Yeah, so it's pretty easy to do.
Well, we don't want unit payment, too, but I mean, it's, it's, he, councillor Jones is talking about putting it so that every, we know how much is going in there.
Any other business puts a number on each unit, and then they report to that, that unit.
And that council will look at that.
Thing by the same token, I think, I mean, if I'm hearing Dennis, we, we certainly need to look at the visibility of renting versus leasing again. You're only renting again. You're only renting again, and I think we can. Public works manager was actually raising concerns about that too, asked the same question. And I think it's on the table, you can certainly use it again, and if it makes financial sense to keep leasing, then we can, we can do that. It'd make financial sense to purchase one, whether it's a used one or a new one, or whatever the case may be. We have to manage the risk, trying to offset it, I mean, we don't want to go buy a used one and then come back with a fifty thousand dollar repair cost in a year, that'd be pretty stupid.
Or does it just make sense? Salute, right, we're going to do an experiment, and that's the guys that specialize in hauling gravel, haul gravel, and us use the tandem for the spot drops that we always have done.
Problem, there's been issues with that, I mean, it goes back to who can do it, when they can do it, and all that kind of thing, we get.
We have a bigger issue with licensing for the semi tractor when we have to the class one, where with, with the tandem, you only need class three. So it's a lot easier to staff that tandem than it is to staff, you know. The only guy that I'm aware of, unless our, we, our first manager has a class form there, is our, our best operator on a, on a grader. Taking off a grader when our roads need to be actually, again, doesn't make whole of sense.
But if you call it gravel for those roads, that's pretty important too.
Somebody's got to prepare the roads for that gravel.
I mean, that's a chicken and egg thing, I mean.
No, it really isn't. You've got to prepare the road to be able to put the gravel on.
Council will take that under advice.
On the discussion about putting the pavement down on top of these roads, all you have to do is look at where do you come onto the road going out of here to Shiloh? The government done it on the P R coming across there. So why aren't you talking to them to find out instead of going out and spending money on doing whatever you want to do?
I have.
I just drove across it tonight.
I have intimate knowledge of that project, we will look into that.
Well, but, uh, that's all you have to do, I don't know why you have to do a study on golf, but the government's already paved that little piece there, I don't know how it's working out, but somebody's got to make it, too. Who's going to do that?
There's been no indication of study.
Well, you said you were looking into it.
Looking into it, yes, we're interested.
Well, what are you, what are you, what's that?
Councillor Corey's going to give us some.
That means, that means I will use all the knowledge that I have and experience that I have, I'm not saying I know everything, and I'll leave as the best monopoly. Make it to council and say, these are our options, this is the life cycle that we can expect of option one, so the internal rate of return on the cost of that will be X. We look at the life cycle cost of option two, what the eternal rate of return on that is, and they will make an informed and scientific decision on what the best option is to pursue.
Because like even corn walls has tried pavement, it doesn't.
Yeah, they use stake with it, and the rocks are great.
Well, they got to water it up, and now they took down whatever they do with it. Put down the calcium and plate and whatever else to try and make the road over there.
I serve, I serve on the conversation, this is the Canada Small Municipalities Committee, I, I get. All the firsthand knowledge of all the small municipalities across Canada, what they try and what works and what doesn't work, and I promise you we'll do the best we can for our municipalities. We recognize that there is a challenge, we definitely want to fix it, and if I got to do nothing else, then maybe I can try and help improve that situation, but we will look into it, and we will make a smarter decision, we can bet on it.
Because that all night will be cheap, put down paper.
No, I don't.
Are you not what it's like?
Payment is not just any of the options, that's the bar, the street, the bar, the team. Pay just put down paper.
Payment's one of your options, so look at, you look at any practical alternatives, you have better all your options, nothing is also an option. But calcium is an option.
Oh, yeah, it does have the grader, it also maintains the road. I, where I live, we very seldom see the grader, you can think whatever you want, somebody tell Craig that they're out, but they don't go down our road because the fire was down and he. Traded all the gravel left into the middle of the road in the fall, the snow came and nobody came to push it off. Craig said that somebody told him that they'd been through all the roads, but they hadn't, because the next time they came along and cleaned off the road, well, they leveled off that bridge in the middle of the road. So. I know in some of your operations, nobody knows where that road is. Where all the roads are. No, you don't. Talk to Darcy. He had the man come up there with his tractor and his snowblower the one night, and he went a quarter of a mile up the road to the bank in the road, and he decided that was the end of the road and the fall came. Drive it. I sat there and watched him. Darcy had to send the maintainer out the next morning to crawl through. So I don't think he knows where the road is.
Mr. Rome?
Council is, uh, always looking for ways to collect taxes. I'm just wondering, are we one of the only municipalities that doesn't assess business tax?
Doesn't assess business tax, no, not the only one, but there's, there's, there are, we have all the charges.
Is that something that's been discussed with David?
Yeah, that hasn't been discussed in council.
I think it's actually quite rare, isn't it?
Yeah, it was council.
Yeah.
Brandon did.
I don't think so.
When I do a craft sale, I have to pay this. At every craft sale I go to.
That's a. Wollonees, in itself, was unique based on, in not having a business tax.
Pardon me?
Wollonees in itself was unique in not having a business tax, when we joined Oakland, Oakland had a business tax in Wollonees that was hot.
Brandon doesn't have one, Dennis.
Pardon me?
Brandon doesn't have one.
Well, I think. Most of the score.
Yeah, well, I think I've got a good idea, there's no business tax. There's, there's permits and things that you need to operate as a trade person and, you know, a salesperson, but there's no.
There is no business tax, Brandon, I can tell you that for sure.
Thank you.
Anything further? Yes.
I just have, um, just a quick question. I'm kind of a check and balance kind of gal, so can we look at the check balances for the gas, tax, all of that? But do we have municipal half tons that run around?
I can understand you, but you're.
Do we have municipal trucks that drive around with half tons, three-quarter tons?
We have, uh, two trucks, yeah.
Okay, do they go home with a person at night, or do they return to the corral?
They return.
Now, when they fill up with gas, it's received submitted, or do they go in this tank that's not going either?
I would think they're beginning from our tanks, well, no, it's the best piece of work, so they wouldn't be able to.
Good gas.
They would get, is there gas there?
The only reason I mention this is because we do have the carbon taxes coming April first, it's the projected date. Fuel taxes are going to go up high, the plastic fuel will go high, and I think to have these checks and balances in place would be very beneficial, as we have just been up to top two. That's my other comment.
Anything further? Okay, we're all, whereas all representatives in regards to the twenty twenty-three financial plan we've dealt with, therefore being resolved at public hearing, we consider it a council, resume this normal for your business. Move that. Councillor Corey, second in council, again. All in favor? Okay, being resolved that the twenty twenty-three financial plan, municipality Oakland Wollonees has set out in the, in the forum approved by the Minister of Municipal Relations, be adopted. Further that operating and capital assets outlined in said plan be incorporated in, in the form part of the twenty twenty-three tax levy by law. Move that. Councillor Hesch, second, Councillor Fisher. All in favor? Okay. Bylaw number three five dash twenty twenty-three. The tax, the twenty twenty-three tax levy by law, first reading being resolved, bylaw number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-three, in the twenty twenty-three tax levy by law be read a first time. Please move that. Councillor McGowan, second here. Councillor Fisher, there's no discussion on our first reading, all in favor? Opposed? Being resolved at the meeting that now adjourned. Please move it. Gregor, second here. Councillor Hesch, all in favor?